What Steve, you didn't want to come in?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Doesn't look like it.
Can you hear me? Can anybody hear me? Is there anybody else there? Can anyone hear me? Can anyone hear me now?
You know, like where the jail garden is? All that parking lot is not Bonanza's parking lot. City, yeah. That whole chunk right there does. Yeah, but so does this spot out here.
So potentially if the city wanted to use that.
That shares with whoever's in Bonanza now? Yeah, and they don't have traffic coming in and out. They're just.
The crowded kitchen is.
Yeah. Right.
That little square is the only parking that those two buildings potentially have.
See, well, I actually think that credit, that's the credit kitchen lot. I don't even think it's Bonanza's to use or whatever that building's to use. Yeah, right. Super crazy. Yeah.
Sorry.
Steve, can you hear us at all? Oh, okay, thank you. Does anybody have Eric's phone number? Can you call him?
Sure.
I don't know. It's kind of weird that Eric's not here or there. And Steve, I don't know what's going on, but the internet here has been stable and so you keep calling us. That would be great. Thanks.
Hey Brian, can you hear me?
Now I can.
Oh, good.
For the very first time.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I won't move a muscle. I've been trying since like 4:58 to get the audio to come on. So you're all there and I'm a little confused because I got this notice in the mail. It was Zoom meeting ID and everything.
Yeah, but at the top it said it would be called up Senior Center.
Yeah, I saw two options there. But it's all right. You got you got cookies to bake. You understand.
I have dishes to do, Brian. I don't bake cookies.
Sorry, pommeiers, pommeiers.
So is Eric coming?
I just. The text message has been delivered. I don't have his number. I could I could go back to that email and email him there.
I mean, we have food vendor trucks come to the Thursday market.
I don't know if there's any this year.
There's been at least pizza at one point.
Yeah.
Last year there was pizza. There's been another one too that did.
Yeah, Cara.
Cara Bezzol, she's. Yeah. But this lady wanted something different than that. She wants, so we had somebody that came in City Hall with our councilman. What they want to do is set up a food truck for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, like 10:00 in the morning until 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night.
They want to do it there.
Yeah, so we don't have any regulations on that. So the council basically tabled everything and wanted the funding commission to give us some suggestions of how we should regulate food. Food trucks, not foot trucks.
Well, I think what they're trying to do is probably get the 505 traffic in the morning, the commute traffic and coming back.
Possibly. Yeah, I don't know. She said that somebody had suggested her set up there.
So somebody.
Five or six, Eric asks. Eric asks, is it five or six? And I'll say it's five.
Right there. You're good.
On his way.
Well, if you can give me 10 minutes, I can be there.
Well, Eric's not here yet, so.
He's on his way. He'll be here. He's taking the foot truck.
I'll jump.
Yeah, because I have lots of reading material here.
I printed off some too. I liked, I liked this. I looked at that. I didn't print it off, but how it where it kind of walks you through it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I like that.
So she wanted to.
I mean, I don't have a problem with food trucks being here. I think that's a terrible place, so.
Yeah, that's what we want to discuss it, you know, do you want to allow the trucks? Do you want to, you know, save an area that they should be placed in? Do you want to allow them even on private property?
I was gonna say, we're talking about if 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 they're on private property, then it's the property owner's responsibility for some of the things that we would regulate if they were on city property.
And they would still have to get licensed and reg, yeah.
Oh, and insured.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They still wouldn't be able to do it how we have it set up now on private property because it would be called a business, accessory business, home based business. Home, home occupation business, and they would have to get a permit for that.
Possibly a cottage law, whoever to cook that, whatever, something like that. It's going to be permanently there in the yard. That's probably going to have to get tapped into something.
Well, yeah, but we're talking, say, we're having, you know, cheese days and somebody wants to pull a snow cone machine in their buddy's yard that lives over here. That's different than having them sitting there three to five days a week for.
Cheese days is all that are all different regulations altogether.
Wild west.
Okay.
We do not charge anybody anything for that. These are stuff to set up the cheese days.
Okay.
So, yeah. So cheese days isn't a very big problem at all.
Okay, well. Okay.
Yeah. And there's lots of food trucks and stuff. We don't, you're decided, and it's all, it's regulated under the Health Department too.
Right, right. I mean, those are the things that they would have to be licensed with the Health Department and have, you know, have everything checked out there and have insurance and have everything checked out there before we would even consider having.
That's all state regulations. So we just have to be very specific on our city regulations. What it is all about here, it's not like I would spend all day on this, but you're so good to figure out the time.
Well, I looked, I got the papers and I'm like, there's nothing abuse on here. And then went to your email.
That's good. We have people who already covered a lot of it.
You can't be done.
Yeah.
I was totally ready for six o'clock.
I don't know. It was the first one that.
It's, it's a, it's a crazy day when, when, when Dennis, when Dennis is the one telling me to come to me.
Exactly.
You know, there's something wrong in there.
I walk in, I'm like, oh, it's you. I won't text you.
Is this all stuff for us?
Very good stuff.
I have, this is not.
Some code?
This is the wrong pile. That's fine. I have the computer. This is the wrong one. It's just a bad print. I know I have like four pages of my own notes.
Digital as well. Sounds like it. Sounds like basically a blank slate where we go.
Yeah.
To make out of, which is pretty cool.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then we don't, the list of, list of concern.
Is it coming? Okay. So we're startable since we have a quorum? Or we want to wait for see? Okay, great. I have it here. That's really funny because I've been here too. Yeah.
Yeah.
I also have a, I have a document. I don't know if I could send you because it's got, well, it's got these same links. So this 557 is Des Moines and I can tell you that right now.
If there's something that you would like to share.
Yeah. I think I have the password for this. I'm already connected. Okay. See if I can get there from here.
But if you tell Devon, was it on MRSC or where was that?
No, it's actually my, it's my, that's Thursday market. It's my notes. I don't know that we need to share these. Okay.
Yeah, that's where I was.
Yeah, actually, I really liked that saved search, the MRSC search. I didn't know Lewis County had a food truck Fridays. Yeah.
Can we saw it earlier too.
Yeah. I've got the link of.
Who has a food truck Fridays?
Lewis County.
Where?
At the fairground most days and then at some park on one day.
Wow.
Food Truck Monday on Ramsey.
Yeah. There you go.
Sorry for being late, y'all, because I think this is already going to be a. This will be, we got work to do.
Yeah, we got what's doing this one, but this is gonna be fun though, I think.
Yeah.
So what would Monday on Ramsey would be? Truck trailer that locates in the public right away.
Yeah.
Moves daily.
Yeah. Oh, that's really funny because I have that same. Oh, this document didn't sync. What the? You know, I bet my computer I didn't press save.
Jeez, man, striking out.
Bad one. There is an epic fail. Yeah, I have the whole Vancouver one. Go just go open save and it'll sync here. All right, can you grab the one that's in the living room?
Say again?
What'd you get to do?
We rode motorcycles all over.
Is this you on the little three wheeler?
Yeah.
You have to have a special license tag for that, right? Not a motorcycle one.
No, track one.
How's it different? I was curious, well, since you got the rider for it, what do they, did you already have motorcycle?
No.
Was it easier than motorcycle?
I don't know.
Okay.
I only have my three wheeler. It's actually easier to get into a three wheeler class than a two wheeler class right now for whatever reason. The two wheel classes are out in months.
My brother, my brother teaches two wheel classes. He's in Oregon.
They're all booked up crazy around here.
I was, you know, back, back before, you know, the beginning of time when I got my two, my motorcycle rider, it was literally the person from DMV looks out the window and you drive past twice in the parking lot. They're like, they go like. And then you come in.
It hasn't graduated a lot more than that.
Well, at least it seems like in Oregon it has. But that, I was 16, so that was a long, all years ago.
So we took a class and our instructor taught us what we needed to do to pass the test and then he actually taught us how to ride the bike. And they were two different parts. You know what I mean?
That's nice.
So, and he taught us, you know, how to control, but what you needed to pass the test.
Easy peasy.
Yeah.
Interesting. All right, it's officially opened up. I thought it would be six. All right. All right. Where do we want to start? I think it sounds like a bunch of us have spent a bunch of time reading.
I would like to, I propose that we go over what got mentioned at council and what, if, if anything specific, we are supposed to be looking at to get that.
And this, this is a work, this is a work session, right? So, okay, so we don't have to propose anything or anything. So there, there was a person came in, they wanted to do a food truck with Thai food, I believe. They were asked, they were, they, they had a lot of the stuff buttoned down that I've been reading about. So, you know, they knew they're going to haul their own trash away there and had their own water electric going. They wanted to be in the parking lot by barbecue Bonanza. There was talk back and forth about, seemed like part of the council, council had problems with a lot of various bits of it. And some of council said, listen, if they can sell food and they're licensed, let's go, you know, let's just do it. So then they decided to kick it to us, which makes sense. So that was what the council talked about. I've got just endless things, but when Cindy gets here, they'll be a little better organized.
So should we?
I guess I can survive with this one.
We examine at least that everything that the applicant provided us and then see what we.
There wasn't a lot in there other than kind of telling us where they wanted, there was like a simple drawing of where they wanted to be, I think. I don't think we care about that so much. Yeah.
I think it's what you guys come up with.
Yeah.
You know, this is coming before us now.
Yeah.
So how do we want to regulate them? To where do we want to allow them? What do we want to do? Basically, do we want to allow them to.
Yeah. Streets. Yeah.
Private property.
The search link, MRCS search link. Yeah, the MRCS search link or MSR.
Was with regard to on a couple of properties that activated automatically activating an X side.
And yeah.
That's a complete search. Yeah, so say that if you charge that to be there, then there's always called excess tax.
Who pays that excess tax? The city pays that?
Yes, yes.
So the city, the state gets a portion of that, whatever it is?
Yeah, so just like the airport out of the airport. So there's people that lease their hangers out there. And so there's a leasehold and excess tax that the county has to pay for leasing the property.
Do you think if we just charge them for a permit for the year, but, and they can be on city, does that trigger that?
No, so we always have like a street permit fee.
Yeah.
So we charge, even if we're, we're in the street, this charge.
Okay.
It's kind of per occurrence.
So it's event oriented.
And so this one is a little bit different, which, you know, that could be something that's looked at too. But let's say that the PD wants to come through.
Right.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Okay, so I, how about I'm just going to blast through, I have, so I've got like, I've got five topics. I read through Des Moines, Lacey, Bellingham, and Vancouver's pretty extensively. I was, I had main topics like what does the county say? Where do these things go? Do we need to tie these in with other city property uses if we, if we decide that it belongs on city property? How far is it from various things like permanent food establishments and residential and what kind of fees are involved? So. As far as what does the county say? I did find Lewis County food truck Fridays do exist. And I'd be more than happy to share this four or five page worth of just typing and links and copy, pop, pasting from the various or just the links to the other cities. So I guess the counties. I can get email.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had some takeaways on them because. Bellingham, I said, good example. I thought Bellingham was a great example. Vancouver, I didn't find the actual regs, but their little cheat sheet was nice. Yeah. And then Lacey was a bit much, but there was some good word in there. And it seemed like Des Moines did not want food trucks. And I'll C-TAC, I also looked at C-TAC. And I think they were more concerned with food trucks getting in the way with kiosks that they make money on very, in various, various places like around parks and around other, the arena or the marina and such. So I think they're selling the long-term stuff where they're making bank.
Yeah.
And you can't have a food truck anywhere near anywhere. I don't think those are problems we have.
No.
But I definitely thought the Des Moines was really hard to understand because their definitions. So if we learn something there, they've got like itinerant vendor, mobile vendor, and stationary vendor. Stationary vendor is still a food truck. So it's kind of very hard. I kept having to go back and referencing.
It's a stationary food truck on wheels.
It's just weird. Yeah. Turn your mic on.
I'm sorry.
Turn your mic on.
Yeah. For YouTube.
Can you hear me better now?
For YouTube. I guess.
I thought we were this workshop. Okay.
It is, but I think we're zooming, are we zooming it? Resuming it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that all these cities are, are much, much, much larger than we are. We have a retail strip of approximately a quarter mile.
Yeah.
With two restaurants, Betty's and Chimmy's in, in that quarter mile.
And Donnis place.
That's what I meant. And, and Donnis and then Betty's around the corner. Do we really want food trucks setting up shop? Because I think if you took a poll amongst the three of those, they'd certainly say no.
I'm pretty sure that if you asked Donna, she'd like no other established business within.
I'm sure she would.
But, but as far as, as far as being an in-town resident, I would love to have other options. And I think the city would love to have other options. So, so, yes, so.
If we do say, okay, food trucks are okay, then do we set a limit on the number? Do we set up a pod? Do we, I mean, I could see the 505 traffic in and of itself during morning commute and afternoon come home is sufficient to probably keep a food truck going.
Yeah.
So then do we have competing food trucks? And where do we end up putting them?
Exactly.
Yeah.
You know, some cities allow them to park right on the street.
Yeah.
And I think in this particular strip of traffic, that would cause untold number of accidents.
Yeah.
If they were on 505.
If they were on the 505, which.
Yeah, because, yeah, that, that would be, parking would be a big problem. Yeah.
They're within the DOT right of way. I can almost.
And a special scenic byway, 505. So probably even different rules for that. But I think we're on, I think we're probably all in agreement that have been parked on the 505 would not be ideal.
I don't think it would be allowed.
Right.
To tell you the truth, to do business on state property outside of there, inside of there right of way.
So we're, we're really only talking about the only piece of city property that's on 505 is that little strip behind Bonanza Park.
No, he's talking actually on the street.
Right, 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 right. But we're all in agreeance that that's a bad idea, right? Like, nobody thinks that's a good idea. So we don't even need to really visit that, but really.
Well, we've got the boat ramp parking where, where the Thursday market has kind of already established food trucks.
For four hours a day, one week, day a week.
Yeah. Oh, definitely.
As part of a larger event.
I don't think that there's, this, I sort of say, while we were waiting, they were waiting for me, but then we were for you. Definitely, this is not a simple thing. So I think we've got to grind into and see where.
Yeah.
Because like there's, so there's the street of barbecue Bonanza. There is, well, you know, we could get crazy. It could be food truck Mondays on Ramsey. We have, and so we got. Yeah, or half of it down or, you know, yeah. The food trucks could, you know, park on, and then on the park on the left, you know, it's, it's two lanes wide. And they could park on the left half of it. And then you could be where there's nobody really using that parking. And then you still have for the bank and for the hospital and for, and for legal landing.
If you do it on Mondays, you really wouldn't be competing with.
That's, yeah, that's the idea of Monday and Sunday are pretty open there.
Food truck on Ramsey?
Yeah.
Because she's not open on Monday?
She's not open on Monday.
Sundays and Mondays.
Right.
So.
And I definitely am in agreeance with, if we opened up the, if we opened up the. And I definitely am in agreeance with, if we opened up the, if we opened up the, the ramp, the boat ramp parking, putting a Mexican truck there would be bad, that, that would be wrong. So some states, some of the cities we're talking about, you can't be a direct competition with the Birkenmorders.
I think Carol was reading, there was one that was like within 250 feet of a, an existing restaurant.
Yeah, this one's like 300 feet and 400 feet to schools, and that's.
Of all existing restaurants, or is there a specific detail about it being?
It was all existing restaurants, but we don't have that kind of space.
Right.
And to be honest, you know, different kind, that, that, that happens anyway. Donna used to have a place right next to her and it's still for rent, so that could come back up. So, you know, I guess if you had somebody serving traditional American food right next to Donna's place, we wouldn't allow that. And we wouldn't allow Mexican next to, next to Chimmy's.
And food trucks can't sell alcohol, so she's got that market for her.
Yeah.
Having a bar.
Yeah.
I got a message from the other two, there is all the city property behind City Hall here, the big parking lot. I mean, that's something to consider too, certain days.
Mm-hmm.
As long as they're self.
I think that's like a, by default, they've got to be self-contained, I think.
Yeah.
Unless it's on private property, yeah, that's what I mean, that's, that's like a no-brainer for us.
Self-contained, meaning we don't.
We don't supply water, we don't supply power.
They have to have their own electricity, their own water, their, and they take their garbage with them.
And Vancouver was really good about saying that people had to have, the workers had to have access to a bathroom, a restroom, which, which makes it nice around, yeah.
This one I had come to us, she had talked supposedly with Morgan.
Yeah.
And was gonna be using their restroom.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And all that, all that would take would be a letter of intent from the business owner saying, yes, they could use the bathroom and they work out whatever deal that is, okay? Cool.
Yes.
That's lenient.
Yeah, yes.
Right. Right, I was gonna bring that up, I was absolutely gonna bring that up, because these are just where the city owns.
Right.
And, but if somebody's like, the IG is a, or the, yeah, it's a perfect example, if they want to put a food truck in that parking lot. I mean, it'd be perfect, but that's on, that's up to them.
Well, we can still.
And the, the local brew hub there has our, the pizza guy that shows up on the market day. And he parks a pizza oven right in their parking lot.
A lot of brew hubs are doing that.
Yeah, complimentary to each other.
Absolutely.
Right.
Vancouver did a good job of talking about mobile food units on the right of way and mobile food, food units on private property. So they were still trying to get some regulations in to make sure that that doesn't turn into a mess, even if it's not on city property. The big ones to me seem to be, how close is it to things? So whether it be residential or other businesses, that seems to be where all, the contention I think is gonna end up being.
Yes. And I think that from the standpoint of licensing, if we're going to license them ourselves as well as the county. I mean, the county is not cheap getting a food vendor's license. And these guys on typical, I can tell you, you know, when Brent's here for that day, he makes maybe four or $500. So to charge them like one quarter of their total take for each. Altogether, and it essentially drove people out of the farmer's markets because they couldn't afford to be there one day a week and pay those fees.
That's a right bloody mess what's going on over there, so that stuff.
There's a question here, one great question is, would we allow on private property of food truck? What's your thoughts on that?
I don't necessarily, I'm not necessarily against it, I'm just trying to figure out who would want them on their property.
Say, well, you've got Rachel Phillips Insurance, she has a big lot there.
The little triangle, this guy could move a couple of his derelict cars and have a great spot for a food truck.
Where's that now?
The little triangle there.
Right by the store.
Okay.
Still shut.
There's a lot of areas, I mean, Jerry Krabs, you know, where Betty's place is at, has that whole, you know, that parking, but say that he wanted to allow a special food truck to come in there, would we allow it on private property? Or anybody else?
Or even the lot right next to, on the other side of Betty's, down below the church, that would be ideal for one.
Now, the church owns that.
Right.
The church, yeah, the church could.
So how do you guys feel about a food truck on private property?
I'm a fan of that as long as they, as long as they jump through the appropriate hoops. And I use the worst case scenario being Bonanza BBQ down at the very end of the street. I, I might have a hard time with that at, at the end of town because of the traffic it would potentially draw.
So, I mean, do you wanna make something like private property as long as it affects the 505? Or, or a residential buffer?
Or a residential buffer, so because that kind of falls into the residential locale. So we were, Cindy and I did a big walk around, so the parking lot behind Toledo Hotel, right next to the, to the impound lot, if that person decided to let a food truck there, is that gonna work because it's only, you know, 75 feet from, from that duplex right there on First and Augustus? But then we also, I guess, so I guess picking a distance from residential and making sure that the rules are such, like, it's not a music thing, it's a food thing, so don't be playing music.
Okay, so first off, would you allow him on private property?
I would.
I would, yes.
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 Private property is okay, and then you determine the rules.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
Now, are we lumping catering trucks into the same category as food trucks? Well, one actually prepares food on-site at that location and the catering truck typically just resells pre-made food.
Are they selling it or delivering it?
Well, essentially it's a food delivery truck.
So that's different, because we already have pizza delivery and stuff working and they just need to have a license. Yeah.
That's totally different, that, that's a delivery service. What I'm talking about is, let's say the guy that shows up on the construction site, all the food's pre-made, it's all in little glass, you know, on ice and everything like that. The county has the difference between.
One of the cities deals with that, one of the cities deals with that, and I think it's Des Moines, deals with that by saying that that kind of vehicle can only be in a spot for an hour and only once in a four-hour period type thing, so.
The stationary vendor standards?
Yeah, so they can, so they could show up in front of town hall and, and service town hall and the post office, and they could drive down the.
And that's typically what they do, I mean, they have a set schedule. They know when all the construction sites go on break and lunch, and then they go in front of city hall for lunch and they'll go someplace else at break time.
I liked how some of the cities had broken that out separately and actually, and supported it with the documentation, so you.
And I think county already separates those two.
Does it?
I'm pretty sure, I think Carol put in a phone call to Mary to ask and make sure of that, but.
So you, you doing the whole food prep licensing piece, you have experience with that. So do, can we just sit under that, so we say if you've got a license to prepare food, then, because we're not worrying about that, right? We're just, I'm trying to think of the.
Food license though requires your food all to be shelf-stable, and these folks are making hot meals.
So that parts different.
So they're definitely different.
When you're talking about catering, I just wanna clarify this. So if I decide to have my daughter's baby shower catered and they show up in their truck and they bring the food in and serve us.
And they spend six hours there.
We, we pay them for that service.
Yeah, they spend.
But nobody, no customers are coming up and buying food from them while they're catering our event.
That's right.
Yeah, I think we stay.
So what you're, but what you're talking about here, in between that is when they make a bunch of food and then just run around to different places and try to sell that food out of the truck.
Those trucks.
I have never seen that.
Oh, they're going to job sites, it's kind of like the tool truck that goes around.
Yeah, they.
Yeah, I've just, I've never seen it.
It, it looks like a, what does it look like, because it has, it's shiny on the outside chrome and then it has a lift top and a lift down. And when they stop, they open up their trays, they open up the door.
No.
Typically not, some of them have, but typically not. They're just delivering free packages.
I didn't know they were just delivering.
There's ones that just deliver, yeah.
Okay, I've never seen that.
Cause the job site guys don't have enough time, they just wanna grab.
You are a small-town girl, aren't you?
That's good.
Yeah. So that's why I was just clarifying, because I'm like, I'm like, wait a second, I, I'm thinking this. But I mean, realistically, do you think we're gonna have a lot of those kind of trucks in Toledo?
I don't think we're gonna have any food trucks other than maybe one or two, because I don't think we're picking up to sustain them.
Not yet. But times are changing.
Yes.
Times are changing. And, and you don't know that somebody might say, yeah, I wanna do food truck Sunday because of all the traffic we get. And the, the group of people that are part of the food truck, truck Friday in Chahalas.
Well, that I could see during summer months, you know, when people are on the way to St. Helens and stuff like that. I mean, you get it on Thursday at the market, people are coming back or going to, and they're stopping to pick up snacks or pick up something for the trip.
Yep.
I'd rather see it back here, or even like we say on Ramsey and close down Ramsey, then.
You could pull that, you could pull that off on Sunday, you could just close Ramsey down every Sunday if you did food prep, truck Sunday and make it a walking street. That'd be fun. And if Sunday doesn't end up, that's the day.
And people could park over by the boat, watch and walk over, they would.
Yeah, they would. I like that too. This spot feels so much bigger and safer and more.
Absolutely, I, yeah.
And more like, like you could architect it as they, if we had an influx of different carts where they could park and whatnot to still keep the traffic flowing good and safe.
And, and if you adjust the signage for the boat ramp, there's plenty of boat parking here. So as long as they know there's plenty of boat parking, you know, in the gravel, then they don't need the beautiful view.
Right.
Cindy and I walked to barbecue Bonanza from the town, city hall. That, that alley has been vacated, hasn't it, on those lots there, so there's no city property leading to that? I'm trying to figure out how you get to barbecue Bonanza on foot. Old barbecue Bonanza building? Just a straight shot like to the jail?
They're talking about that strip of land that Toledo Hotel owns.
No, no, I'm talking about, you walk straight out your front door, Michelle, to the, so that's been vacated, right? So there's no alley there.
There's no, the alley goes north-south, not east-west.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was just trying to find out, I was trying to figure out if there's walking right of way.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. And when we were leaving, we decided to cross the street and literally look both ways. And as soon as we stepped out, a truck comes barreling down and it's, yeah, it is a sketchy place to have to walk from.
Yeah.
So I think there needs to be definitely something in there about the traffic and the ability to safely maneuver.
Why, it looks like a lot of these cities on a case-by-case basis are proving spots. So if somebody comes to you like the, these people did, and they say, we wanna do a food truck, we might say no to that, but we might, we might say yes to a couple other spots. And it looks like it's at the city's discretion, whoever reviews that, I don't know if that's us or if that's.
You guys need to see, would the city council want you guys to do some way of regulating food trucks? That's your task? So if that's your recommendation, that's on a case-by-case situation as to where the spot is, I mean, that's something you can say, but then.
That's a lot of touches.
If a food truck comes in, they're gonna wanna know what your regulations are, you know?
Yes.
What do I need to do?
Oh, no, I agree with that, I was.
No, but no matter what the parameters we put down, it'll still be on a case-by-case basis, because it's gonna matter the type of food truck, what it's next to, because you're not gonna want competing businesses.
You should put that in new regulations.
Cities have. Yeah. Of, of exact like kind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And not just generic food.
Yeah.
Well, do you think we ought to include in there specific locations that are not allowed?
Yes, I know, I think we should specifically say where it is allowed on the public streets or on the public property. Or, or I guess we're not, I, I don't know.
Well, I mean, they're, we're talking about certain areas, we don't want them, I mean, and the, the city hall or the city jail kind of falls into that.
Yeah, I don't think we want them there until, until pedestrian, until tra, if pedestrian traffic were fixed, then yeah.
And.
If, yeah, I mean, you could just basically spell it out and you could even say you could be in one of the, the.
We could identify two or three locations right now and say, these are the following approved location, nowhere else.
Yeah.
Unless you make a private deal with private property.
Right.
Yep.
And, and if somebody comes to us and says, but I wanna put my food truck here, maybe we didn't think of that spot and it is public and we readdress it. But by default, I think you just have where it's approved. I agree with that.
So in short order, we could actually do that right now and write it into our right, we could say the boat ramp, Ramsey and.
Behind city hall.
Behind city hall.
Behind city hall. Yep.
Yeah. There's an alley, Steamboat Landing owns part of it, the building next to it owns part of it, and I believe there's still a north-south alley there.
Yeah.
No.
The lot.
Oh, the whole lot.
That's theirs.
I'm sorry, Cindy, you were talking not about the alley, but about the lot to the west of the alley, right? Is that city property?
No.
No, that would be private property.
That's the real estate dude.
So we, we would still have to make the graphics for private property.
Absolutely, because as you get down to where she was just asking, that's a little close to houses.
Yeah.
And so I'm not sure if I want a food truck outside my house eight hours a day, three days a week.
So we can narrow that down, what will we allow as far as venturing from 505 on private property?
Yes.
And.
Most of it works well, we have a couple oddities like the, we call it the quantum on Second and Augustus, that's commercial and.
If it's right behind your house, would you wanna?
No, no, but I was just saying that, that if you, the only two places
Are you talking about?
South of Augustus is, I wanna talk about.
The old doctor's office.
And then the, the other one is the old doctor's office.
Okay.
Those are the only two south of Augustus that are commercial properties. Other than that, other than that, you could say commercial properties, but I think you're gonna have to put a distance to residential.
Well, you could say any commercial property, commercial properties north of.
Augustus.
Augustus.
Yeah, that one's all.
And that takes care of your buffer.
Yeah. I guess you also can pull that off if you say wrapped around 505, 505, so if you say within 200 feet of 505, I think you accomplish the same thing.
You do not, because a lot of the properties along 505 are residential.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking in town here.
I'm saying in town, in town starts at the harbor building and that's all over the bridge.
Yeah, so like all by Betty's, all down there, all by, well, my house is on 505.
So rather than based on, on 505, we base on a distance from residential?
But they all, of that residence.
Yeah, I think we'd be better off with the commercial properties north of Augustus.
Okay.
Then essentially we're eliminating private property. So we're just gonna say there are a lot of food trucks. Where would you put them?
You're not eliminating private property, you're eliminating a zoning thing. There's private property that's commercial, that's not residential.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying that that, those commercials are within any buffer. No, no, son, not what I'm saying. I'm saying that that, those commercials are within any buffer we would put of residential.
Right. Right?
Correct. But I think it's one thing being a doctor's office inside and it's another being a food truck outside.
Well, unless you're the residents right behind the doctor's office. I mean, what is your buffer gonna be? Is the question. If you're gonna make it a hundred and fifty feet or two hundred feet.
That's the rub right there. I don't know what that number is.
Okay, let me ask this question. What are you guys thinking a buffer is? Is a buffer, okay, I've got a lot that's, you know, two hundred by a hundred, that's commercial, that's a, that's residential. Is the buffer where the food truck actually is on that lot or is the buffer properly aligned to property law?
I think it's food, food truck location.
On the, on the property.
Yeah.
Normally in planning things, it's.
Publicly aligned.
Mm-hmm.
That's where I'm getting, I guess that's where I was kind of going crazy.
Can we do this like we did the, like we did the medical or the marijuana circles, right? So, so you could, or like they do with the water, you know, the water setbacks are just.
It's something different. Yeah, you're talking two different topics.
Well, I'm just saying is those, but those are more radius around a spot, right? So if you drew a circle around every residential, what would that have to be to keep a food truck off of being right next to your house?
That's, I.
Go ahead. I think we got a slippery slope.
Yeah.
Very slippery.
So why don't you write in if the private property agreement comes into play as a case by case basis? And then, I mean, I think what it's gonna trigger is.
Public hearing.
Public, exactly. Public hearing without property owners within three hundred feet of that property. Cause that's what we would do. So like right now, if you, you know, have a residential area and you want to start a little home based business, you can. But you have to get a permit to do that and all property owners are notified. So that's kind of like the state thing. If you have it on private property, it would trigger that. The way you guys are gonna talk.
And we would just have to have one public hearing about that. It would happen each time.
Case by case. So it's like barbecue Bonanza came into the council and they said, we want to put, we want to build our, no, we want to do our prep work in a building on our property in residential.
Right.
Um, although that, that was a residential issue.
I, I think the case by case is another, sorry to say the word again, buffer for us to be able to troubleshoot it as they come in. And, 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 and place them where we want to place them and not next to people and stuff like that.
Yeah. So what there's to see the, who's, the, what's the name of the place right next to barbecue Bonanza's old building?
Uh, credit kitchen.
So let's say, and they don't, they don't serve in, right? They're, they.
Yeah, they do takeout from there.
Do they? So, so if they wanted to do a, say they wanted to make some extra money and they want to rent a spot to a food truck for a hundred bucks a month. How do we enable that to happen? That's kind of where I'm thinking.
This is which business?
The one right there, right next to, the other side of barbecue Bonanza building.
Uh, the cozy kitchen or?
Yeah, the, yeah.
But it used to be Sandy's.
Yes.
Yeah.
So let's say they want to do, you know, they've got a little bit of property. I, I'm not saying barbecue Bonanza, cause most of their parking lot is city property. So that little thing, they could potentially stick a food truck there if they wanted.
Or isn't the building across the street commercial?
Same thing with the building across the street, yeah.
Okay, let's use that better example.
Have you ever tried? Yeah. We ran across the same thing, Eric, though. We have that same issue with traffic. Trying to get in and out of the, that, that place that used to be Sandy's because it's, I mean, remember when, uh, Bar, Bonanza had their big thing for the schools?
But we already have businesses there and we already allow that. I, I definitely agree with, I think it was Glenda that was like, that's already proven itself to be, I mean, it's, it's a business that sells food and whether it's in a cart or, you know, a mobile truck or the building, traffic's the same. So definitely the one across the street doesn't have those problems. Cause if they took those derelict cars out, you could just pull right into that drive, you know, and park right in there.
Right.
Yeah, I don't see that guy doing that, but.
But yeah, but if, but once he knows it exists, maybe he does. Who knows?
Once I win lottery and we buy his building.
I don't think that'll happen.
Be optimistic.
Yeah. So where are we on the private? Sounds like we're, we have some disagreement going. And so I'd like to make sure that we.
So if we were gonna go on a case by case on the private, so I mean, the, the most obvious one to me would be the grocery store. Yeah. Because that's, that would be the location I would want to be if I had a food truck in Toledo. But.
Based on what I'm hearing.
You know, that would, you'd have to make an agreement with them, but.
We're gonna want to do private property on a case by case basis, which would probably within three or four hearings enable us to eliminate all issues, don't you think?
I don't know. I think that if I was a business company and it was a big thing real established and then they're telling me I have to pay this amount of money for this, this amount of money for this, and then it's still, and now we're gonna do it because I, you know, goes through a public hearing process and you can either complain, um, I probably wouldn't put my food truck in your city.
Yeah, there needs to be parameters which are now.
Well, so even if there, even if there is a public property option and then the private property special case, do you still think that's a problem? So if, if they know they could come park in the, in the boat ramp parking.
That probably would be a problem because they wouldn't, if they don't have a public hearing, there's fees for all that.
That's what I'm saying though. Yeah.
Yeah, I just, if I was voting right now, Eric, what I'd vote for is there is no private property food trucks and we have three spots in the city that you can set up that are public property and that's where we're gonna allow food trucks to be done with it.
But we already have that. We already have, we have fireworks trailers that sit in, in IGA. We.
Fireworks trailer, that's not enough. Why not? It's not, uh, it's more nonprofit, so we got, yeah, but still it could be needed for reasons. It's in the, this, it's a commercial property.
Yeah.
So IGA, so IGA calls it okay, can't be for what they're discussing.
No, because it's private property. If you say no to private property, then.
I'm more concerned of like a Rachel Phillips property or, um, a Betty's Place property. They own that whole lot. You know, and I mean, to me, that'd be a perfect place for a coffee stand, you know, what else? Food truck coffee stand maybe or something like that. But, um, it's right, I mean, it's surrounded by residential to, the only business is Betty's and then across the street at the, um, shortstop. So, you know, shortstop, yeah, they could potentially, I mean, that, that's just the issue.
Wouldn't you just have to put some, uh, something about having enough parking or having enough, um, you know, space to.
That would.
I mean, that's really because if you have, I mean, Betty's, come on, we've, how many times have you been up there? You can't even get in there.
Last time we went, it was, last time we went, we went two weeks ago.
You have to park across the street sometimes.
Sometimes down the block and across the street, so.
And so Betty's is like a commercial, but we're Rachel's act. It's not a commercial property. So she has a, um, official use permit.
The insurance agent on the corner, she's got a.
Insurance.
Coffee with people and the insurance people. Okay.
Yeah.
So she has a special permit to allow business there.
Okay, so. So the commercial properties are Betty's, shortstop, and then hops down to the store.
IGA, yeah.
And then across the street, those two little restaurants and the old still shop with the cars.
The whole, the whole corridor.
The whole corridor, the rest of it, all the way out.
Yeah, yeah. And then, uh, the doctor's offices.
The doctor's office.
The quanta pad next to Eric is a commercial.
Yeah, it is.
What are you guys talking about?
It used to be the church slash movie theater slash.
Oh.
Right now it's just trying to fall down.
Yeah, yeah. Gotcha, gotcha. Yeah, yeah.
That, that is commercial, so kind of how you guys are talking, you would be able to leave something there because it's already established as a commercial.
That's zero lot line building. I'm not sure.
I, 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 I mean, do, I, I don't think that's gonna be an issue right now.
Maybe we should stick with public land to begin with and dip, dip a toe in the water and then come back to it if this is successful or if we have uptake or somebody comes and asks.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that's a good idea. I think. If I have a food truck, I'd want to park it in a store. I'd want to make an arrangement with the store. I'd pay them whatever.
Yeah, if the store wanted to, yeah, take your money for it, then, then they would.
Logical place to be, lots of parking and the store parking lot's never all the way full.
Yeah.
Not even, you know?
Yeah.
So that would be the logical place for me.
And yet no one's ever approached the store or the city to do that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
There, there used to be a little coffee truck years ago that actually went, I'm shooting part on five oh five. Before food trucks would leave in her range, you know, and, um.
Was she in a van?
Yeah.
I know.
Kind of be a start.
Uh-huh.
And she would go to the parking lot at the grocery store and set up there for a few hours or whatever it was. She'd go across from the night school, set up there before school, after school. And like near city hall, if we wanted coffee, we'd put up a, a paper, purple piece of paper on our window. And deliver us coffee. So, I mean, but this was, you know, way before the whole food truck rage.
Yeah.
You know, and so there, it, there was no regulation. I mean, she had a business license, she was licensed with the milk department. Nobody really cared. Um, unfortunately she passed away and so that went away, but we're not like, we're, we need to set those parameters. So let's just, for sake of reasons, tie Eric in circles. Let's say we allow that in those three areas you guys discussed and on already established commercial property. And what type of regulations do you want are contained? Do they have to be hooked at some, say you have to be hooked in your water sewer? So self-contained, you know, what type of regulations do you want?
I think it's self-contained.
I think completely, there's no real.
You leave, you leave every day, you leave every day and it's immaculate where you work.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with that too.
And if you, and, yeah.
And then.
What do their employees do for a restroom?
That, so that's like, that's why you want to be.
Worked out.
Yeah.
With some local business. They have to have a letter.
Well, Thursday market uses the boat ramp, boat launch, right?
Within so many feet or what? So say that somebody is behind city hall, the restroom's at the boat launch. Would that suffice?
That would suffice.
Want so many feet of a restroom or what do you want?
I would say so many feet of a restroom that would also cover the, the spots down there and then having access to steamboat landing.
The, even if they were on Ramsey, that'd be close enough to the boat launch, wouldn't it?
Say that again.
They were.
Even if they were parked on Ramsey, if we shut down Ramsey, the boat launch is right there.
Boat launch or?
What do we want though, that feet to be, how many feet from our restroom?
Uh, in Chahalas, the farmer's market is on Boishardt and you have to walk a block, a city block to get to the restaurant. And everybody seems to be okay with that.
So our three spots, our three spots are the gravel, the boat launch parking.
Both serviced by the boat launch.
Both by the, and then are we talking those Ramsey Street on Sundays? Ramsey Way?
And still it's only a half.
And I think that's still fine to walk to.
Yeah, I think the bathrooms at the boat.
But we just gotta figure out the number.
Actually say how many feet.
How many feet is that?
Uh, well, we'll, we'll measure that out and whatever fits.
I want something to resolve or this.
Well, within, within, within X feet. So whatever that is, whatever, so we can measure it out.
Or we could just kind of guess.
Is it three hundred feet?
How far is it from Ramsey?
I think if you said like five hundred feet, you would cover it.
Five hundred feet?
Two tenths of a mile? No big deal.
No.
Or one tenth mile.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet from a bathroom.
Yeah.
Um, I think you have to be self-contained. I think we have to worry about noise. Some of the, one of the cities said, uh, your generator has to be seventy dB or lower within ten feet. I'm, I agree with that.
I agree with that.
They, they specify the sound.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys have said, um, said something about not, you can't serve restaurants. Do you want something like, you can't have certain type of food within a restaurant that's, that's not a feed away?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
And how many people got?
I would say the only, the only spot that we were talking about out of the three that's applicable to that is Donna's and Chimmy's. So no Mexican at the boat launch and no Americana at Ramsey.
If she's open.
If she's.
But I don't, I don't know that we're gonna allow, are we gonna allow it on, okay, let's talk about Ramsey on Tuesday through Saturday. Is, are we gonna allow a food truck there? I think it's only because she's closed.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
But we also said it's commercial property, it would be harmed too.
So. So.
If Betty's, which I mean, they would love hamburgers standing.
Or they want to let the Thai truck there, yeah.
Yes.
But let's say that, okay, across the street you have shortstop and they're, they told some, you know, food truck, yeah, that's served hamburgers. You can serve hamburgers outside of, you know.
I could see Donna's parking a Mexican tacos truck right out there to.
No, but the shortstop could put a taco truck there.
Absolutely. Well, so maybe, maybe it's like a hundred feet or something.
Taco truck.
Sure.
So a hundred feet? That's not too limiting, but that, that stops you from parking a taco truck right next to Chimmy's.
Yeah.
I think you get, you're gonna have approved or, uh, non-approved genres at each one of the spots as they come in.
So some of the regs said, and they were, it was, you can't sell the exact product. You can't sell a direct competitor.
Yeah.
Which I think is the same thing, Mexican, Mexican, Chinese, Chinese.
Direct competitive with brick and mortar buildings within a hundred feet.
Boom.
I'd expand it to two hundred.
Expand the numbers.
Two hundred and fifty feet?
Yeah.
I would.
Well, okay, so you've got to still make sure that Thursday market can have a pizza truck there.
Yeah.
What's that?
You've got to make sure Thursday market can keep their pizza truck because Donna sells pizza.
Enough.
Yeah.
So a hundred feet takes care of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the, the distance is fine, but I do think that there's some of it's got to be.
Good.
Yeah.
We're telling them they can't come over to the market and buy baked goods.
So we want to cover the definition of food truck.
Uh, yeah, I think cherry picking.
If, if a food truck also, you know, if a food truck that's selling food out of it, that's pre made somewhere outside of food truckers and have a food truck.
Is that essentially an ice cream truck?
Yes.
I mean, am I wrong?
The guy that drives around.
The guy that drives around and I shoot, does he have a business?
And I.
That's like one of those little trucks that sells potato chips too, right?
A number of those cities definitely divided those out. And I think that's a good idea to divide them out. Cause I like the ice cream truck that drives around town in its hundred.
Right.
So a food truck versus a concessionaire?
I think a food truck needs to prepare the food in it.
Versus a concessionaire.
Is still.
So you've got, you've got like delivery, you've got, uh, mobile concessionaire. So you've got delivery specifically. So you drive up to a place and you hang out for a little bit of time. You sell like to the city, they buy the coffee from them. That's an option. That's different than somebody who's gonna set up all day.
I, no, I would say a coffee truck that's preparing the coffee in it would be a food truck because they could potentially park somewhere and draw customers in and cause traffic problems. So I would say a concession versus a delivery. Like if I'm gonna deliver a pizza to your house, I'm not causing problems with traffic. But if I'm gonna set up and sell, if I stop a city hall to sell them coffee and you and you and you, oh, coffee person, I'm gonna go over there. Well, now you can have a problem.
Yeah, and you are doing the same thing.
Yeah.
So we wanted to find a food truck as some, as a vendor that prepares.
The food.
Inside.
Food or beverage within the vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
And comes and goes for the day. Is it, is it gonna be there the next day?
I don't think we allow any overnight. Right.
Absolutely no trace left.
Not like that boat and trailer's been in the parking lot of the boat launch for three days.
Fortunately, they're not selling food out of it.
Yes.
And then you also have. And then you also have time of day issues, I think we need to set.
Uh, don't we, don't we have quiet curfew time of days? I mean, estimate.
Yeah, so they need to be gone by ten.
Yeah.
Um, so do you want to have it where, um. None of the regulations, like anything for the annual festival?
Yeah, I think you separate those out.
Are we going to allow them to amplify music?
No.
No.
Just a question.
I think they have a strict sound ordinance.
Food truck pods where.
Yeah, that, but this isn't Portland.
Generator be quiet, no music.
Yeah, it's not about the vibe, it's about getting food.
Yeah.
Although.
You gotta make a vibe, get a brick and mortar.
I just asked, I wanted to make sure.
Although.
Lacey and Toledo.
I think, I think Lacey, I, I think Lacey was encouraging people to have it be sustainable and cool looking to go with the DDD, you know, with the way things are supposed to be, but I don't know that we care.
They can keep that up.
Seating.
Must look like a single wide.
Do you have to, do you have to provide seating?
I don't think so.
Oh, so some people were talking about maximum size that they take, that it takes up.
Uh, yeah.
Sure, if they wanna set up, so if you've got a truck, so if you're taking one of the parking spots that the boats sit in and you park your truck and you put a little table out there, is that, is that okay?
Yeah, it's ma- more matter, do we let them set up more than their parking spot?
I think maybe.
Came, the people that came with their permit request said that they were gonna have a table and, and four chairs, a plastic table and four chairs. One of the city council members wanted to make sure there was gonna be seating.
Yeah.
Um, and lighting, that's what they were concerned with, the seating and lighting, because if you're operating in the winter, it gets dark pretty quick.
Four o'clock.
Should we have summer hours and winter hours? I mean. The town shuts down at eight o'clock, I mean, shuts down at seven o'clock most days, honestly.
But would benefit from having one of the spaces, more food options available throughout the night, even in the winter.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, I.
But that could be the discretion.
If you have a food truck and you're operating it in the winter hours in the dark, you're gonna want lights on it.
Yes, you are.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's a business.
So if you're after dark.
But if you put it in your regulations, it's not a question of whether you want to or not, it's.
So if you're, if you're operating.
You're operating after dusk, after dusk.
After dusk.
Because in the summertime, it's not gonna.
Be dusk for ten.
And if you're not making the money, if you say the town's at seven, which you're not too far off. They're not gonna, they're gonna figure out real quick, they're not making the money from just ten and they're gonna pack up and be gone at eight o'clock.
Yep.
So are we gonna require seating be provided?
I don't think we require seating.
I don't think so.
Okay, can, can we provide that seating may be provided?
Sure, limited seating.
I think that we should, how much square footage should we allow them beyond?
That's what some places did, is they, they named out the square footage that you could use.
How about like, like, how many, I think it, should it, we pertain it to the size of their food truck? So if their food truck is X amount of square foot, we allow them double that or one and a half times that or, yeah, that's what I'm asking. Like if, if their food truck takes one parking spot, do we give them another parking spot? To be able to set up a table and have a line?
So do we give them two hundred and fifty square feet?
Too crazy?
That's a lot of square footage.
Well, ten by ten's a hundred and that's only the size of a canopy.
That's true, so, uh, what is, so a step van is like, is like eight feet by fifteen or fourteen?
Right.
Our twelve-foot step van is, I think, eight by fourteen.
That's a hundred and twenties, hundred and forty square feet or so, so you double it to two hundred and fifty, it gives them place for a table and a couple chairs.
Is that enough space or is it half again?
Well, no, I mean.
Is it less or is it that much?
Definitely not here, Steve, but see how much size.
What's eight times seventeen? Eighty and fifty-six.
Eight ten seventeen.
Eighty and forty and sixteen.
Yeah. Hundred and twenty.
Thirty-six.
Hundred and thirty-six.
So the average food truck is between a hundred and two hundred square feet.
Okay. So if we give them a ten by ten, another hundred square feet to set up a table and some chairs.
So the size of your truck, your vehicle plus ten by ten, max, something like that. Until somebody. Do you count the size of the truck?
Three hundred square feet and be done with it.
So that's just to set up their little area.
Yeah, find out if that's not enough for somebody. And if they wanna have two tables, let them have two tables.
I'm not saying that, I, I'm saying that if they become popular, you're gonna need more than that, so you gotta provide for it, so if their food truck is between a hundred. Hundred and forty and two hundred square feet, just give them three hundred square feet to set up, they can do it whatever they want.
Oh, you're talking about in addition to their food truck?
No, no, including their vehicle, three hundred square feet.
No, I think it should be double the square footage of the food truck.
So four hundred.
Just, well, whatever the food truck is.
So equal to the food truck.
Right, if your food truck's a hundred and fifty square foot, you get three hundred if it's.
See, that doesn't work if you show up in a little tiny thing, right, let's say, and you're selling ice cream and you want, you, you don't even have room for a table, so. I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to genericize it, right?
A hundred square foot, which is a ten by ten.
So the size of your.
I don't think we're gonna have a deluge of food trucks, it's just given three hundred.
Two hundred including the vehicle?
Two hundred total and nothing pushing.
So what did we say a food truck is, is?
Two forty.
If a hundred and, so if it's a hundred and fifty, two hundred, at least you're fifty, that's ten by five, that's not enough. That might be enough.
So, let's say three hundred.
We'll say three hundred, like Steve said.
Like Steve said.
And then once it gets gone and we see that, you know, we.
Get the long way around.
And we have ten food trucks in there every day and that's too big, we can tighten it up.
Yeah, we'll deal with it, I don't think that's gonna happen.
No, I don't think so either.
Anytime in the next ten years, so. Okay, so three hundred square foot total?
Three hundred for your square.
Yeah. They got around to it.
What else did we need to?
See, actually scroll back down, so that picture there, all that little truck has is, sorry, all they have is, they have a. A fifty-five gallon drum and two chairs around it, see those, see that?
Yeah.
Certain suite.
Yeah, that's all they need.
Unless they have more than one customer.
That's true, it could be something that you have to sit down and.
I mean, if I'm going to food truck, I'm not going there to sit at a table and eat, I'm gonna get my food and get back in my car.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, but again, that's me, so.
Unless I'm driving to St. Helens and which comes.
Yeah, there's a million places to sit.
If, if I'm on my way to lunch for, with my work buddies, I want a place to sit down.
Yeah.
I don't want my pizza in my lap in my truck.
Yeah.
If I was doing that, I probably wouldn't be stopping at a food truck unless I.
Why not? I used to all the time.
I wouldn't sit at a table outside of a food truck.
Oh.
I'd find somewhere else better. There's lots of better places.
That's, yeah, I pick, copy pasted this into, they did a good job of dividing up.
If you're driving by on the way to St. Helens and you got three kids under seven, don't you wanna get them out of the car?
Yeah, I'd still get food and head there.
And then you'd walk over to the park.
Really cool food truck, like where there's a lot of food trucks and around like a open space in the center.
And there's tables.
I, I've been in a food truck, I think, which was a bus.
That's different, though.
Potentially city provided.
There was a food truck that had, the front half was the food truck and the back half of the bus was a table in the middle and seating. So you'd walk in the bus and it was all enclosed, there's one of those in Portland.
Yeah, I think that's something that can develop on its own.
Okay.
Uh, we need to make sure that they take away their garbage.
Absolutely, leaving it pristine or, or.
And the, uh, no trace.
No trace left.
Or a two hundred dollar fine, three hundred dollar.
Or a fine or something, I don't know, what you.
You start.
Have to have the.
I think if you start putting, uh.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot of places, there, there's reasons why you can lose your permit and I think that's one of them.
I think.
We want to charge them, um, a street permit fee if they're, they are on.
Public land?
Well, what do we try, what do we charge the boat parkers?
The boat parkers?
For the ramp. They, but they buy an annual pass to park there, right?
They charge you.
There's a fee box.
What do you wanna do, something like fifty dollars a day or three hundred dollars a year for the same food truck?
Yes, they should, there should be a fee, I, and I was kinda hoping you would help us figure out how to, how, how we properly get. How we still encourage it so we get to have it, but, but we understand there's costs associated with it.
What does the county charge again? What did you say?
If.
Oh.
They charge five hundred and forty dollars.
A year?
Yeah.
There's one town that charges a hundred and twenty-five dollars for the first year and then fifty dollars after that a year. Does, does the Thursday Market pay to use the boat parking?
They do not, so that was my, my next question.
Cuz we're nonprofit.
If there is a food truck park at Thursday Market, they get charged.
I think it's market.
Is Thursday Market exempt?
We can exempt Thursday Market.
Yeah, I think that should run under the kinda cheese day festival things.
Or it would just be like, there would be an additional vendor that would then apply from the market and still play their, pay their Toledo fee to operate in there, but just also, that's, that's the market decision. Uh, the fee that the vendors from the farmer's market have to pay you guys every year? Or sorry, if they make over three thousand dollars, yeah, that, that, that same thing, so they would.
That's a business license.
Right.
That's not a fee.
So you still need a business license?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they would have to have a kind of business license and then.
Right.
Then to kind of figure out where they are going to fall.
That's a question I've always had, is if they're new coming in and you don't know how they're gonna do and they don't know how they're gonna do, do we have them come in and apply for a business license with that information, but we don't know yet? Cuz we've got several vendors that we're thinking about and, you know, I don't know if, you know, if I'm not gonna be successful, it's successful. And then once they reach a plateau, they come back in and pay their fees?
It's all done with the state now.
All right.
So, um, as they do their taxes and stuff like that, I think it would probably trigger something at the state level. Um, the state knows that there's no fee and that's the three thousand dollar mark. So I think that they, it would trigger if it's not to that three thousand.
Yeah, I'm not.
I'm not sure how it would.
I ran.
Stuff like that, that's what I assume should happen.
I, I ran across something that I did, an RCW that I didn't know existed, that if you are selling produce that you've farmed on your own land yourself. There's no city can make a, can charge you a business fee nor make any rules to stop you from selling it.
Right.
So that's some, I love, you knew that one existed?
No, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I didn't either, um, I have the RCW I could send to you, but.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah. I don't, I'm just curious how Thursday Market dealt with that.
Well, if you were gonna, if you were gonna be a part of Thursday Market, you would apply to Thursday Market, they would say yes or no to you, so you'd have to play by the rules, by that, to been there at that time.
Thursday Market has some, because they're part of the, the Washington State Farmers Market Association, they have their own binder of.
Yeah.
A lot of rules and regulations that adhere to the state.
Yeah.
Standard, something the county of Lewis did not know about.
Who are familiar with.
Um, and, uh.
The other thing, do you have to carry your liability insurance?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
And so some of the talk on that is, what are the numbers? Do, do we, do we know what those numbers normally are?
What's that?
Is it like five hundred, twenty-five, or some cities are five hundred for, for bodily and twenty-five for physical? One of them's a million.
We could, too, too, so. And I think minimum is a million.
Great, and I also think that there should be a hold no, should hold the city harmless against anything.
Endemnify the city.
Yes.
So, let me try to get something. Put together. You guys could carry a card, add change, whatever, then in our next fee.
That sounds good to me.
Maybe you have to come up with something too. Or, you know, have an, they, I was thinking about this, what's up with this? No, we could add it, one of them discussed here, and then you guys can cover all of these, and they will act like that.
Yeah.
That'd be the nineteenth. Yes.
Okay, so then we would, we would come up with something, propose it to city council, they would approve it, and then we would say yes to the Thai food list or.
I think we've pretty much come up with what we're coming up with.
Yeah.
You can put it to form correct.
Yeah, the Thai food thing is kind of, well, when they did say, which I thought was kind of odd, they could, they could do it during Thursday market at boat launch. Or, I mean, at the jail, I thought that would come up.
I thought that's weird too, maybe we can.
Did you?
Yeah, that's what they said and I was really wishing I could say something cuz I didn't agree with it.
Yeah, I thought that was very odd that. Do it during Thursday market at the jail.
Yeah.
That makes no sense.
I think what they should do is join the Thursday Market and just be there.
Yeah.
Thursday Market liked that.
They could do that right now and do a trial balloon, much easier.
She came by while I was at the.
Actually, there you go, you took them, so that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I was at the jail garden, that, what she just, what Michelle just said kind of confused me, we were at the jail, Brooke and I, gardening and she stopped by and she said that she was going to do that. That she was going to park the truck there and I was like, oh, okay, interesting, I didn't know anything about that, so.
Concerned about somebody opening a restaurant up there at the farm place too, and it's like, uh, so sad.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess it's very similar to Sunday, Monday in front of Donna's place where, where they're closed for, you know, so it's, it's not a restaurant now, so. Until it is.
So, you know, I could think about it a little bit more, and, and perhaps I could talk about something, just shoot him over and get out of there too and then try to have a product. We'll have to take a look at it. Man, I've been figured out to September, October, food trucks over, who knows, but.
So what's the food truck that wants to set out there?
It's Jane, remember Jane that, from the market, the Thai lady?
The Thai lady?
Yeah. She sold, she was selling at the, at the market maybe two years ago, three years ago.
Okay.
And then she's got a, a food truck.
Jane, yeah. Oh, yeah. And what's she wanna sell?
Thai food.
Why doesn't she just join the market?
That's right.
See how she's a little confused?
Very much so.
Because, um, we were trying to spell it, or she might have a city business license, and she said she had one, and she doesn't, she has the state license, but I mean, it is different now because she's doing. Website to get the city business license, I'm trying to explain that to her and she showed us, this is my license, but it was the state license.
Right.
We were trying to explain that we have the actual city business license too, and you go along the city, you know, to get that, so that was very confusing, so. But we're gonna come up with some type of thing, like one of these things did, this is where you get this license, this license, this license.
Sure.
So do we expect her to be at the jail this Thursday?
I didn't, no, I didn't hear it as that definitive, but I didn't hear it like definitively that she was going to park there, but she, that was her idea, I think she's, I think she has since learned that that is not happening.
So there, let's see, there's two other things, signage, some towns say it can only be on the vehicle and some towns say you can have one additional. Signboard.
I think we should allow at least a, a.
One additional signboard, I agree with that.
If they wanna park back here, you're gonna need to put something with an arrow headed up here.
And then I think when we're talking this hundred feet from somebody that specializes in the same item, I think that's from the front door, right, not from the back edge of that property, yeah.
From the front door, from the main entrance.
Yeah, from their main entrance. Uh, so that's the only two I think that I saw that we didn't kind of cover. Or that I was overthinking. Yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Well, we've got a lot of new territories.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, me too, that's my insight.
Especially on Sunday when we look down Ramsey and it's empty all day. empty all day.
Yeah, you can get, yeah.
And it's also hard to go for that because you don't have a bay, I mean, and, um, you have a ATM over there, you don't have to worry about, you know, the bay or the doctor's office and stuff like that.
Right.
Concerns there, blocking, um, you know, half the street.
If we could draw him in, how fun would that be to.
Yeah.
Yeah, once we get this button down, I can see going to a Friday, Friday food truck and talking to the vendors and say, you know, we got a really sweet spot available on Sunday. Why don't you all carry one down there?
Even the traffic, like if you tell them, like with Betty's, with the traffic coming from Riverdale. This is the first place they hit.
Absolutely.
And they're hungry.
Yeah.
Yeah.